Be good to talk to those ladies.
I will. I will.
Jay, good morning. It's Terrell Wilson. My apologies, I'm without video this morning, so I'll be a token name up there on the screen.
We're ready to roll. Okay, I'll go finance to order.
I'll call BPW to order. Could I have approval of minutes of December 1st meeting?
So moved.
And motion by Brian second by, can you make motion here? Yeah. Motion by Brian second by Kathy. All in favor, aye? All right. Joe, you're up.
All right, Tom.
Good to see you here.
Thank you. Good to be here. First off, I need a couple of budget amendments. First one is for the Peter Street project that we have. It was for, we would like to add an additional 350, probably did. Add 350 additional feet of sewer to that. So that increase for the construction is 52,750. We'll use a fund balance for that. Along with that additional work, we need to have the, we've learned that we need to have the inspectors there daily as well, so we have a technical services change order for 7,500. Tech Industries is the construction company. CTML are the engineers.
Both not listed at the same time? Is there a motion for Kathy named motions or second, Brian second? Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Next, we have a emergency repair on Rogers Street in forever. I give kudos to the collections guys. Couple of months ago, they noticed a little dip in the road. The line that runs down that road is 18 inches and then goes to 21 inches. It's a big sewer line. Deep. We had a manhole repair there a couple of years ago. So we were wondering if maybe backfill issues, maybe there was some sort of something. Anyway, we TV'd it and found a partially collapsed 18-inch. I did have a picture if people want to, you know, I think it pretty much screams emergency if you look at it. So brought this to the commissioners, once we TV'd it, brought it to the commissioners, started working with a couple of engineers on a repair strategy. There's the picture. There are also along this, I don't know, 1,000-foot of pipe, there's multiple cracks and other kind of scary little situations. Initially, we were just going to line the 325 feet from manhole to manhole. Commissioners suggested wisely, we'd look at the rest of the street, at Rogers Street, and we found a lot of roofs, more cracks. Nothing as severe as this, but, so we'd like to just line the whole thing and get that done. And the price for that is $139,625. It's cheaper than digging it. It's 14 feet deep, like I said. Actually 14, I think it goes to 16. So we need to use capital reserves for that as well to get that done.
You figure it's good enough, though, to reline instead of?
Yeah, like I said, we had to, we piggybacked down to county's engineering group and they looked at it back and forth. The lining company said we could just line it. The engineers were a little leery of that. So what they did last week, they actually went in and put a short patch, like a 10-foot patch, right there where that break is.
And then you line the whole section.
And then we line the whole section.
Okay.
The other benefit to the district is, in the process of TVing and cleaning the rest of that line, it's a hole spot as well in the collection system. A lot of deposition in the pipe because it's the hole spot. And things tend to back up there during storms. So we got that all cleaned out. With this type of repair, you have no joints in the pipe. Fracturing, like, you know, reduces the friction. We don't have a jetter large enough to clean well an 18-inch, let alone 21-inch diameter pipe. Just not big enough, doesn't put out enough water and enough pressure. So this will make our ability to clean it a little bit better. We'll be perfect. We'll still have to go back every five, whatever, years and give it a really good cleaning, but it'll benefit us in the long run as well. And this also has to be like less than, where that break is, is less than 100 yards from the railroad, so.
Is there a motion for the emergency fix on Rogers Street?
Move it.
Brian moves it, Kathy second. Any more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Joe?
That's it.
About your budget?
Yeah, we're going to go to your budget now.
That's it for the evening.
Here. I lost audio.
We're working on it.
Thanks, Tim.
Welcome back, everyone. We had two technical difficulties and we're back online, so we're back with Joe Brilling and he's doing sewer district number one. I don't know what you heard or did not hear, so start over.
Yep, okay.
On the revenue side, you'll see the sewer rents are quite a bit higher than previously. Queensberry raised their water rates that they're charging sewer one, so we're going to need to increase our rates as well. We also hope to be through a math plan and report, a sewer district extension, kind of a new rate structure. Hope to be done with that by 2021 calendar. And then at some point in 2021, most likely, we'll have some debt service associated with some repairs that we need to do out there. I just, it was, it's my best guess. Definitely the revenue side. Okay, and we're going to lower, just to make the thing balanced, clerical, sewer rents will be dropped $11,300 just to make sewer one balance.
Actually, because, actually, because I didn't, I didn't have the exact number of what Queensberry, I knew they were going to raise it.
Okay.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to increase my water sewer rent on the expense side, buy that.
Okay.
So that'll be GA 8135.44160. It'll be 67,300.
Ah, very good. Just accomplished the opposite way, but we like it. Thank you.
The other interdepartmental expense side, that's going to be an intermunicipal agreement between county sewer district one and county sewer district two to perform the O and N, operations and maintenance. Both there, check the lines, check everything clean, get the sewers moving forward. We're going to formalize that finally after 20 something years. But there will be, you know, there will be more going on with sewer one, hopefully before the end of this calendar year. We'll have to do public hearings and whatnot for the math plan report and the extension and the changing of the rate structure. I think, I don't know, do we have to do an intermunicipal agreement?
No.
Page sewer district two?
No, sewer two. I'm proposing a 2% rate increase on the operations and maintenance side. That's reflected there in our budget line. And then I need to change as well on the revenue side, very bottom of page 111, interdepartmental revenues and other. I need to make that 20,000, that 32,000 from sewer one. Page 112, typical compost. That best guess estimate going year to date, because essentially, next year's revenues are based on this year's expenses when it comes to compost, so that's reflected there. And the ad valorem, top of 113, I'm proposing a 2% rate increase. If you keep having these $130,000, 800-foot sewer line repairs, it's going to be tough times, hopefully we don't have that, but we do have plans, debt service coming in 2021 for sewer district two. A large project at the plant that you will most likely see a presentation on November or December. And Al, did you want to talk a little bit about how we're presenting this, or we'd like to go about presenting the fund balances and capital reserves and things?
We can have that conversation with you, Don, unless you want me to jump in now.
Okay. So moving forward, any 110? The payroll difference there is we now, I now have my admin assistant as well as a account clerk. And I, and I gotta say, it's worth it. Yeah, and it's, it's totally going to get better. They're trying to grasp a lot of things in a short period of time so far and
According to my staff, they're doing a pretty good job.
Yeah. And thank you very much to everybody up here for helping, although they're pretty quick.
They are.
And I'm happy for them. Lucky. Based on that, I've got a little bit of money in there for some, I'm guessing I'm going to need some office furniture in there to kind of make things a little easier for folks on the expense side.
It's a $400 increase, huh?
I think we put in a thousand, I think a point two.
It was 600 this year in the amended, so.
And we're going to do our best to use whatever you guys have left here to kind of make that happen. Under postage, I just wasn't sure would the, would the change to billings be easy? So I just beefed that up. The other difference under any 110 is the contracted services, because I, it's been something that I've not really wanted to do all along, was contract with one engineering firm to do everything, and I still don't want to do that. But there are a lot of incidental things that come along that I can't really do an RFP or I can't wait for that. So the Rogers Street repairs is one of those types of things. I need somebody that I can call and get an opinion from and run some things by. They also helped me very much with the, we're going to do a roof repair, we're going to do HVAC in the admin building. They helped a lot with that. And I can just anticipate that, you know, some expense there for us day to day, week to week.
Yeah, so we've had a very similar experience with the county, you know, separate from Joe, in that Matt and I were really struggling with the same set of issues. That's why we did that RFP for the consultant engineer that we have on staff. And we found the same thing. And I agree with you, Joe, that you have some kind of increased short-term costs, but at least in our experience, it's a, it's a money saver in the long run. Because with your, you know, Rogers Street repair, you're on the fence about do we slip line or do we dig it all up and everything else? You need somebody independent to come in and just kind of say, you know, here, here's how you weigh this out, here's the pros and cons, and help you make the better decision. So he's looking at 130-plus for that Rogers Street, but if he dug it all up, it would have been 600, 700,000.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, I couldn't agree with Joe more that having the engineer in your back pocket is a huge benefit.
Do they have to, does that separate, or do they go off our?
They can use RFP because he's, he's
Back, kind of situation.
Very good.
So I, you know, I, I don't want to do that for the larger capital type.
And that's just what we've done.
But, and another thing that came up was, I got a couple of phone calls from some folks that wanted to connect, and it would have been like plan review and that kind of thing. It's always nice to have the engineer look at those and make sure everything's, and that way I don't have to worry about being under or over a procurement policy number. I can just go and give it done.
And especially with those kinds of things, too, it is good to have a, so I totally agree with Joe, for the bigger projects, we're still doing RFPs. That's what we're doing here at the county, too. But it's good to have somebody who knows your system, right? When they're looking at that plan, they know what your overall issues are, they know what the overall situation of your collection system is, they can make a more informed decision.
Yeah. And so it's worked out so far. And I'll be coming back probably next month with a budget amendment to pay them for their, for their work that they did on the roof stuff, but what, you know, it may or may not extend, you know, I don't know what it is going to come up that I'm going to need.
That's the O shoot line?
Well, one of the, one of
Yeah, one of 20.
Under 8120, under the point twos, I've got a skid steer that we want to get. It'll be used generally for the plant and for the collections guys. Another thing that we found, and we have been doing quite a few of our own dig things with the, with the villages, and we have sand and stone and whatnot, that's fine. The guys have to shovel that into the back of the truck. I mean, we're not using, we're not using huge volumes of it, but still, it's, I just lost one guy to a bad back. And we'll use it at the plant as well for scrapings and things like that. And that'll be, that'll be a capital cost out of the capital. Supplies, other is a big jump. We need manhole frames and covers. I think we were down to two or three a couple of weeks ago, and there's steel. And we got the pricing, they're expensive, so I bumped that up a little bit. Same with repair and maintenance, other, we expect a TV and leaks, and we have to contract that out for some of the larger lines that we have. We've got some plans to do a little bit of more of that this year on the stuff that we can't take up. 8130. Point twos, the equipment line, I put $15,000 in there. We haven't gone a year yet, I don't think, where we had some pump or something go. So I just populated that to hopefully avoid the need for too many budget amendments. Same thing with the small tools.
You haven't used any of them yet this year, is that true?
We're about to. I just, I just, we're pretty much going to, yeah. Well, originally, what we're going to, what we're going to use, I was going to put off to 2021, but that's not going to work. So we're going to spend it while we got it, I guess, this year, and get it ordered. It takes time to get here as well. Under 8130, electric costs, because we will have the, not that the Cogen at the plant has been running significant amounts of time, but we are going to be doing some major digester upgrades, so the digester will be shut down, we're going to lose that methane. We will most likely be using a bit more electricity. So I just beefed that up a little.
Any questions for Joe at this point, or? You good?
Same with the repair and maintenance line for 8130, 250, investigated that the roof for the solid building is around $72,000. And the HVAC for the admin building will be about 60. Both of those are original, 35 plus. We had a, we've got some pretty significant leaks in the solid building roof leaking on our new 2.5 million dollar duct presses, so we're going to get that fixed.
35 plus with NVH?
Yeah. Yeah. We have skylights in the solid building roof, two of those. One of them came right off and flew into the neighbor's yard, but hopefully here. The other one just stopped. So we're gonna eliminate those because we did a lighting project a few years ago. We don't need those skylights anymore, so.
Dana, you have a question?
Yes, Joe. Um, you have two lines in the budget, and I think we've been condensing them into one line, but you have mileage and expenses for carpool, two hundred dollars, but then you have an auto fuel for five thousand. Why are they two different lines? Do you go out of town and you need to fuel up out of town or something?
Can you tell me?
Okay, the, um, the line item for the carpool is eighty-one ten, four-two-sixty, page one fifteen. Up near the top of one fifteen, two hundred dollars.
Yeah, I take it out. I don't use the carpool anymore.
You don't use the carpool anymore? Okay, is, is that why you're?
I, I left it in there, but every once in a while, if, if we gotta send guys to training, it'll take one of the carpool vehicles to go to train. Um, I mean, I can, I just leave it there.
Yeah, I guess you'd leave it in if that's the case, because there might be training coming back at this point.
Okay, so then?
So auto fuel has nothing to do with the carpool, I guess you're saying that's separate, Dana?
Yeah, we have our own trucks and equipment.
Okay.
Auto fuel is either diesel or gas for the trucks or your small engines and stuff together. Small engines and, uh, and generators and mobile cars.
Thank you.
Um, so, uh, so the repair and maintenance under eighty-one thirty on page one eighteen, eighty-one thirty, the repair and maintenance, that's a significant bump there, but again, that includes the solid building roof and the HVAC for the admin building. Plus normal repair maintenance that we do.
And those should be one-time deals.
Till the next thirty-fourth.
Right.
Well, and, and just so no one's caught off guard, every roof in the plant needs it done, so we'll be, we'll be, uh, one a year at least.
Okay.
I have one more question, Brian.
Yeah, go ahead, Dana.
I can't, I can't quite find the page, but Joe might know what I'm talking about. Sewer District number one, the revenue is kind of small, but that revenue can afford to send thirty-two thousand to Sewer District two?
Gonna have to. There are, there are no employees of Sewer District number one. Currently, if there's an issue up there, Sewer District number two employees go handling. That can't keep happening without some sort of payment or agreement. So that's, that's where that's.
All right, thank you.
Eighty-one thirty-one, things are going pretty well at the compost facility. Uh, happy to say, um, we did lose one employee, uh, that was on the books for an extended period of time. Uh, he's retired. Um, he had been on disability and he's, he's retired now. So, uh, the two guys that are there are doing very well. Um, and for whatever reason, we are, uh, we just can't keep the finished product in, in stock. Yeah, we got a kind of little bit of a waiting list, which is unusual for us.
Yeah. Means we're doing all right.
So as soon as, as soon as we get the results back, it's, it's boom, 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 done. So hopefully that revenue side will actually come up to where I'm budgeting every year.
Very good.
Good one.
Maybe extend it.
Go ahead, Dana.
Joe, enter, on eighty-one, or eighty-one thirty-one compost facility, you have interpart, inter, interdepartmental revenues. What other departments send revenue there? Is that like, is that like the town of Granville and those other things?
That reflects Sewer District number two's cost for running compost. The compost budget, I kind of keep track of a little bit separately because we have an agreement with Lake George. We just wanna make sure that all of the monies are shown. So that's Sewer District two paying their portion of the compost O and M.
Okay. But isn't the compost Sewer District two already?
Yes.
So why would the Sewer District two do an interto, interdepartmental transfer to themselves? That's not interdepartmental.
For tracking. It's for, it's for tracking and, and to show, uh, Lake George what our piece of that pie is.
Okay.
And Mr. Hatfield, the, uh, the numbers we keep referring to, right, eighty-one thirty-one, that is technically a department within the solid waste fund. So, uh, or the Sewer District Fund, sorry, we, we got rid of solid waste. Um, so it is technically, in the accounting world, an interdepartmental revenue because you're moving it from one department to another. And to Joe and, and Brian's point, it is for, um, clarity and transparency when he then goes to calculate what the total compost O and M was to charge back to the participating municipalities.
Okay.
Al?
And, uh, Mr. Hap, on page one fifteen, in account eighty-one ten forty-four thirty, you'll see the expense side of that revenue in his other department.
Okay, thank you.
So he's got the expense in one department and the revenue in another. So it's, it's really a bookkeeping transaction so that he can monitor the, the compost facility expenses.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you want Al to interject?
Yeah.
Now, is that where you wanna go?
I, I, I would like to, I would like to. Okay. Feel the room a little bit.
Go ahead, Al.
That's round the pile under the new section.
So I've already, I've already apologized to the budget officer because unfortunately this just came to me last night, so he's had two seconds notice about this. But every year when I work with, with Joe and his questions on the budget process, he's always been a little bit queasy about how we, uh, kind of back into his number being zero, because Joe has two, two significant pieces of his budget, the capital piece and the O and M piece. And right now, the money he's raising on the capital side exceeds his debt service because we see, we know the train's coming, the debt service is growing. So we're intentionally trying to build that reserve to support the, uh, the upcoming debt service. The problem is, when you go to do his budget, you don't wanna budget a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar surplus while he's raising rates on the O and M side, two percent. His users won't, will, will, will revolt for, for obvious reasons. So it doesn't, it doesn't always tell the story of what's really happening. So when you, and over the past few years, when you pass the budget for Sewer District, you see the revs and expenses kind of in balance. And a lot of times what we do to Joe is, he says, okay, my user fee fees are gonna be one-point-four million. We drop him to one-point-two on him, even though he knows they're gonna be one-point-four to make, to make the fund come out. Uh, you know, the, the perception of the fund is it's in balance at that point. The reality is, the capital side is actually gonna grow and the O and M side probably has a little bit of usage. That, that same thing happened this year. So what I'd like to propose to, to Brian and the board, um, because I think it's number one, more transparent, and number two, when I report out to you in May of the actual numbers, they never line up to what the budget was that you passed in November. There's always been a disconnect between what I report out to you in May and what you adopt as a budget in November. So what I'd like to do is, in the eight-nine-nine-nine department, which is the capital reserve portion of his fund, we would add an expense line that's whatever the difference between his, his levy and that year's debt service. So if he raises five hundred thousand and that service is three hundred thousand, we would add an expense line that was contribution to capital reserve for two hundred thousand dollars. So that would take and show, so then the, the capital portion of what he does would show the real story. We're gonna raise five hundred thousand, we're gonna spend three hundred thousand on debt, and we're gonna add two hundred thousand to the reserve. So that will be a more appropriate and transparent story of what you're doing with the Advolorum monies that he's raising through the levy. That in turn would then show more clearly the effects of the user fees within the operating side of what he does. So this year, if you look at the booklet that you were handed out on page. On page, whoa, please hold.
One nineteen.
One twenty. On page one twenty, you see that right now, as it stands, that they're showing a surplus of seventy-two thousand nine eighty-two. And with the twelve thousand dollars that he just added, um, by changing that interdepartmental revenue from sewer one, that would bring it up to eighty-four nine eighty-two. The, what that, what that doesn't tell you though, that eighty-four thousand dollars is actually two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand dollars being added to the capital reserve and a planned, quote-unquote, planned usage of O and M fund balance of one-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. There's, there's no way to get that story from the way that we've traditionally budgeted Sewer District. If, if you embrace the change, and Brian embraces the change, what, what would happen is you would now have a capital reserve fund that's in balance. It would show the contribution that's gonna be made to the capital reserve, and the budget would actually show appropriated fund balance of one-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. So when you adopt Joe's budget, this board and his Board of Commissioners would clearly see there is a planned usage of O and M fund balance of one-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. The way that we traditionally budget Joe's fund, it, it doesn't ever tell that story. And I think it's an important story to tell that you're planning to use a little bit of fund balance. We do that in every other fund in the county. So I think for Joe, for Brian, for this board, and for even the Board of Commissioners, not to mention the, the rate payers in both Hudson Falls and Fort Edward, it's a lot more transparent, in my opinion, that you're gonna make a contribution to the reserve for future debt service, and you're gonna use a little bit of the O and M fund balance, which, which shows why he's recommending another two percent increase because we're not quite, not quite there yet on the, on the needs of the district. So it, it embraces why Joe's recommending another two percent. So I just wanted to, I, I do apologize for the, the lateness of bringing this idea to Brian. Um, but it literally was one of those things, it was during my insomnia last night that I was like, hey, wait a minute. Joe's been uncomfortable for years now, and I think I'm starting to understand why. So this is, this is a, a possible solution to, uh, making Joe more comfortable with his budget request and, and maybe being more transparent to both boards.
Just for information purposes, Al, can you tell me if that would make expense from the capital reserve susceptible to permissive referendum? I know that's what it does on a town level, but I don't know about it at this level.
No, at the county level, Joe's capital reserve was set by resolution, not by local law. So, um, and, and that number, and that number that I'm talking about would just be a budget number. So what happens in reality is at the end of the year, Joe might have another, like he brought to you this morning, he's got another hundred thousand dollars of emergency repairs coming out of the capital reserve that wasn't budgeted for. So that, that number would decrease the amount of the contribution. So instead of, instead of sending two hundred thousand to the reserve this year, he's only gonna be able to send a hundred thousand. So that the actual contribution of the reserve is always gonna be the difference between the levy and the capital cost during the year and the debt service. He doesn't always know, we know what the debt service is gonna be, but he doesn't always know what those emergency repairs are gonna be. There might be a year where he has zero contribution to the reserve, even though the budget plans for two hundred. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
Absolutely. That was, that was a good explanation. Thank you.
Yeah.
Is there any other questions on that? You might go right to him.
From my perspective, what I've always, one of the biggest goals that I had when I took the position was, knowing that there are those two revenue streams, I'd always wanna have capital reserves above and beyond what my debt service is. And I always wanna have fund balance, which I, what I call fund balance, which is O and M, extra money in O and M. Just for those instances, and I can't think of, uh, eleven years now, I've probably had nine of these types of situations come up where, whoops, you know, I need, it's never twenty thousand dollars. Do you know what I mean? And that's just, that's just what I'm, what we have to deal with. And, 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 and you, that sewer on Roger Street may very well have collapsed if staff hadn't just noticed a little metal in the pavement that wasn't there a month ago and watched it, okay, for, for a little while, and the act's getting worse. So that type of thing isn't, you're, you're not gonna be able to plan that. We can't TB every ton of sewer every year. It can't be done. Um, that's the only other way to know these things. So, uh, we do what we can, and you're always gonna have these huge, and I'm sorry, it is, I know it's a big dollar one. Um, but we're not even addressing main things.
But we are hitting the right direction.
I, I, yeah.
It's taken a while.
A couple, three years ago was the first year that we ever had a fund balance for O and M.
We did borrow for it.
No, we didn't. And we quickly spent it though, too, you know what I mean? I mean, that seems to be the thing is that, and, and I know that, that Chris, you're trying to set up some sort of system where you can't be above this or can't be, and, and I, you know, that, that thing that I saw, I argued, you know, with it. And, um, and I'll probably continue the argument.
No.
Um, 'cause for, for, for us, a million-dollar capital reserve isn't enough. It's not enough. Just saying.
But Joe, I appreciate the explanation, but do, do you know what the sweet spot is, roughly? Is there a target that we're going for?
What's your target? Where's your sweet spot, Mr. Wilson is asking?
For a capital reserve?
I think both for your capital and your O and M fund balance.
I'd really like to see over two million for a capital reserve, and I'd like to see a minimum of half a billion in fund balance. Yep. I don't wanna put an upper limit on anything because you never really know. You know, five years from now, it could be a very different scenario for us. So I wouldn't wanna be too constrictive on, 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 on that. Um, I, I, I go back to this, this one, the long-term control plan, which is one mandate. It covers a lot of work. It covers both the plant and the collection system. But we're, we've got hardship financing for up to twenty million dollars right now. And that is for work related to the long-term control plan. We're gonna spend more than twenty million dollars on the long-term control plan before it's all said and done. Okay? That's one mandate. It doesn't cover everything else that is going on in the world of water quality, which is where I live. Um, so, so, but, you know, that's the world. I just think it's important to kind of change the mindset a little bit. And I'm, I'm not against, you know, constructive criticism, and I, I, I want it all. But I just think that we, we, yeah, just try to open it up a little bit.
And I think actually you pushed us there.
I, I, well.
I think we're, I think we're.
I think that's my job. I think, I really do think that's my job.
Yep.
A big part of it. And that's appreciated.
Do you have a question, Dana?
Yes, I do. Bottom of page one nineteen. This goes what Al was talking about, a contribution to the reserve. Um, there's a line there, miscellaneous, miscellaneous reserve contribution. Is that where that would go?
Yes, sir. That's my.
Okay, but there is no, there is no revenue. Is that because we never see revenue of re, capital reserves?
So the revenue is the, the levy that was at the beginning of his revenue, Dana, the five hundred and whatever the.
Five forty-five, forty-seven.
Page one, pay, on page one thirteen, it's five forty-two, four sixty-five. That, that levy is what funds the reserve.
Okay. Another question I have for Joe, for the compost facility, you wanna buy two blowers? There's four there, right? Total of four? 'Cause I think we bought some, we bought some new blowers a few years ago.
Well, I put that in there in case we, we do need that. We do still have two blowers, but honestly, in twenty, twenty twenty, we've got, uh, run timers on them now. I just put that in there because I wanna be able to get them if I need them. We have sixteen of, we have sixteen of them in the compost facility that are running. So I, I just, I always budget for two.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Any more questions or was that the end of your?
That was the end of my budget, yes.
Pleasure. Very good.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Al.
Thanks, Al.
Deb already said earlier that was all good, so she said we did need to discuss one. You guys have interference anyways.
So for today, we have two snow and ice agreements. One is the Warren County Snow and Ice Agreement. It's based on the same as last year. So I think we need like a resolution so that the chairman can sign.
Move it.
A motion, I got second from Kathy. Any discussion? Hey, Dana.
You say no change from last year, but is that Warren County's suggestion or is that our ask?
We don't ask. They ask us. And they ask us to do point six eight miles of road for six thousand five sixty-one and sixty-one cents.
Okay, but if they're asking us to do that for no change, of course, they're going to ask no change. Do we want an increase in that amount or, or are we okay with?
No, we, last year, they gave us a change without us asking. We don't want to change.
Okay.
You guys want to ask for a change, I can ask for a change.
No, it's just the difference between a seller and a buyer.
Good point.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the resolutions? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
So D O P has laid out there's no nice agreement, a little bit easier for Dana to read because it's an average of the last three years and it's gone down. Uh, we pressed resolution one ninety-nine last year so that the chairman can sign for this five-year agreement. So I just wanted to let you know that we're doing this.
And this is the one you discussed, or it pays according to what we do anyway?
Yes.
No matter what the number is.
Right.
I'll move that.
It was a five-year agreement, so that we have to move.
Do we?
Oh, yeah, we, I guess we don't have to change it. Just letting you know.
We're just letting this go over there.
But it changes every year based upon the previous three years.
Right.
It's an average.
The number will be whatever it is, no matter what.
It went down because last year was the light one. And this year, the woolly bear and the farmer's dominator not in agreement, but then again, twenty twenty, so.
Yeah. We didn't get any rain, so I don't know if we're getting any snow either.
Farmer's on wax, so it'll be bad.
Yeah, well, I wouldn't bank on that.
Woolly bears are mostly orange, so I don't know what to do.
I know. Twenty twenty.
Even though woolly bears are confused.
The woolly weren't against the vote here.
Um, so we have two grant opportunities that we would like to apply for. They are both in the Lake Champlain Basin. They've opened their large grants program recently, and Beth would like, from the Lake George, Lake Champlain Regional Planning Board, is going to help us apply for a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar grant for environmental improvements like stream runoff and water space stabilization. So can we have permission to apply to that?
Kathy moved it. Is there a second? Second, Brian, second it. Can I second it? Is there any discussion, questions? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
The second grant is also in the Lake Champlain Basin, and it is to apply for a grindmaker. It's a hundred thousand dollar grant with a five percent in-kind match. We would like to apply to that and see where it goes.
Move it.
Got motion. Kathy seconds. Any questions, discussion on this? Ma'am?
I guess it's, what's the timetable on this? Is this something that turns around pretty quickly? That if it happens, it'll be in twenty, twenty-one winter or it'll be the following winter?
It won't be this winter. We'll hope for next.
Any more questions? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
There was an accident on County Route one fifty-three this summer that took out some guy rail. And we got a check for four thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars and three cents. The budgeted revenue for the insurance recovery for this line is five hundred dollars. So I would like to request moving three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to our supply line.
Is there a motion?
Move it.
Motion from Brian, second from Kathy. Any questions? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
I didn't have.
You're not getting the three cents stuff.
I knocked it out. Seven dollars and three cents. So our, I didn't have time to print our auction list, but I can send it out to everyone. It's a two thousand five Crown Victoria, two thousand five Ford Focus, two two thousand seven Ford Focuses, and a two thousand seven Toyota. So can I auction them?
Is there a motion to auction the surplus? Kathy's. You got a second, Ross?
I'll second that.
For eight seconds. Questions?
The resolution also mentions that they are surplus, right? They have to be made surplus in order for us to auction them, so I'm sure it'll all be in there.
I remember.
Yeah.
So I just said it wrong.
All right.
No, you didn't.
If it's a surplus, it went right to the auction.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
That's all I have.
All done for today. End quote.
Thanks, Ryan. So on to the budget.
We start on thirty-nine with admin, is that right?
Thirty-nine.
Page thirty-nine is the big book.
All right. So this is the D P W admin line. So I took out the deputy position here, and the numbers reflect that. My hope is that if the candidate transpires, you'll reconsider financing that. I made the other numbers reflect that. I mean, any questions on that? Um, we also have solid waste, which we kept for the testing. We have nine more years of testing on that.
Those are eighty-nine, I believe.
Page eighty-nine, yes, sorry. Oh, wait, I forgot. On the fourteen ninety, so I sent out my travel plan because I have to send that out. Does anybody have any? I know it's, um, why not happen, but.
Let's hope it does, right?
It looks good.
Even the California one?
I don't think so. And we don't finance that at all. That's the, um, the national, oh, yeah, the state, the county highway superintendent. So that, that's financed all by our county highway superintendent. Because I was supposed to go to Alabama for that, but it didn't happen. And next year's California, probably won't happen.
We lost the audio again in the main room.
Okay, everybody back on again?
All right. Sue, give us the thumbs up.
That means kicking the cables under the table.
So on carpool, is there any questions on the revenue?
That's on ninety-two, right? I think, I think they think, yes, ninety-two.
One twenty off the appropriated fund balance.
Yep, and two, and one.
Nope, one twenty's staying on the dental.
Oh, we're going to, okay, those aren't going to change. Okay. So just one twenty off the, that means you got clarification.
I did.
Brian, where are you? You went silent for a minute.
Okay, uh, one twenty off the very first revenue line, just to make them balance. So it'll be eighty-five thousand four seventy-six.
What page? Ninety-two?
Yep, the very first line in carpool, revenue.
Eighty-four thousand one, right?
Eighty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars, right? Or, no, that was with the others. That was when we were going to change both of them. Uh, eighty-five thousand five ninety-six.
So on page ninety-three, we listed out what we were going to purchase this year. The two foreman trucks, the minivan for carpool, and five sheriff's vehicles. You probably got what I spent where I wanted to. We did our budget and then we packed it, so we just wanted to show you what we did.
So Deb, it's the five sheriff's vehicles on top of the two that we more or less approved here a month ago?
Yeah, because this is for next year's budget and coming up for sure.
I didn't know that number was a catch-up and that's all.
Nope. Well.
It is a catch-up.
Well, we have to do five a year, so we're still three behind, which we may have to look at later in the year, according to how the year goes.
Yeah, so to that point, um, Al, Al and I have been talking, and as of yesterday, we're thinking carpool may end two thousand twenty, when Al closes out the books next spring with a fund balance of maybe seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If that ends up being the case, what we discussed yesterday is, to Mr. Skelly's point, we would still be behind on sheriff's car replacement because of obviously trying to be conservative, given the financial uncertainty. So based on where the fund closes out and how the financial picture looks at that point, what, what I would request the board to consider is if come April and May, when Al closes the books, carpool ends with a fund balance of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or thereabouts, and, you know, we've got some certainty from the state and federal government on what our, our funding picture is, uh, maybe we should look to appropriate a hundred thousand dollars or so of that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar fund balance to buy three more cars. It's less than ideal because then with the five that the department already has planned, you're buying eight cars in one year, which isn't ideal. But it's better than being behind in our replacement cycle. So we don't need to act or anything today. It's just something I'd like to throw out there as something for us to consider in the middle of next year. Ma'am? A hundred thousand really gets two, right? Yeah. So a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand, whatever we needed to get three. I didn't ring with me. I'm trying to think back to your recommendations from last year or where things should be as far as was carpool. Your recommendation was somewhere around five hundred. Five hundred, five hundred was my, no, five hundred was my guideline of a healthy balance regardless. Do you think that this would be a little excess of that and you want to make it up? Okay, great.
Hey, Deb.
So one of the other bigger lines in that fund is the miscellaneous large tool equipment. And I also sent out that, that's the Collie Sanders. Those are, one is for building to grounds for where they stand. And one is for one of our foreman trucks and a snow plow for the building to grounds and a snow roller for these kids here. So is there any more questions in carpool?
I have a, Deb, Deb, that equipment you mentioned, that's not all carp, that's, that's not carpool, that's other stuff, right?
The equipment is carpool.
Everything we've mentioned was just in carpool.
Because the foreman trucks, the building to grounds trucks, all the fleet trucks, all the fleet vehicles and all the carpool vehicles come out of that fund.
Okay, even a snow plow for a vehicle is a carpool expense?
If it's a carpool vehicle, it goes on, yes.
Yep. So a snow plow for the building to grounds pickup or for our foreman trucks will come out of that.
Okay. Even a, even the skid steer, is that carpool? That's not carpool, is it?
It's building to grounds. That's other kind of machine.
Okay, so the snow blower for the skid steer would not be carpool?
It's to a carpool function for building to grounds, so we've asked them to report. Good question.
It's not a carpool vehicle.
Oh, so I said it's building to grounds, so I don't know where it's at.
I could make an argument for either one. I don't know if Al has a preference.
You're muted, Al.
On purpose.
All right. If the equipment rental for the skid steer, it comes out of road machinery, then that's where we should buy the plow from.
That's what I would say.
This is a new thing.
Yep.
So it's, it's, we haven't been paying in to pay for something like this, so does the tax come from somewhere else?
Ideally, yeah.
Or do you transfer?
Or do you buy it from?
Do you transfer the one time from carpool over, so it's going to do the work for carpool?
Well, it goes inside. Hopefully, after season, it's part of the estate.
Right.
Or do you buy it out of road machinery and charge rent to building to grounds to cover the snow blower?
We buy it out of building to grounds.
Yep.
Doesn't mess up my plan. All in favor?
Ma'am, you on it? No?
He's not complaining, so must be we're good.
So can we solve this in this moment? Should we discuss it?
We will discuss it further, and it will be reflected in the tentative budget.
Thanks, Dana.
By saying that wherever it belongs, we're comfortable with these repurchases, and it'll be distributed where it should.
Well, that's what we're going to have to do is put it where it belongs.
She's going to build it in ground, right?
Well, that comes to a follow-up question. If you're going to buy, if you're going to buy two foreman trucks, but you're only going to buy one snow plow, that means you're going to reuse a plow off an old truck?
No, so when we order our new foreman trucks, they come with Sanders and plow. This is for a building to grounds vehicle for plowing.
All right, so their vehicle does not have a plow currently, so you have to buy a plow?
Right, right.
Okay, I think.
If they want a plow, they'll pay $8,000 for the skid steer, one too, right?
Guys, I imagine if a foreman's truck is worn out, the plow is probably too.
Yeah, no, you got a good point, you got a point, Dana.
So now we go on County Road on page 95, I think we draw. Some things that I want, that are not really easy or apparent to point out in the revenue is, when we did our budget, we stuck with just chips, because we had to make an assumption, and that's the assumption we made. Um, there's no guarantee that we will get paid, there's no guarantee that we will get EWR, um, no guarantee we'll get 80% more than 80% of chips, who knows? But we made the assumption that we will get the full amount of chips and no pay for EWR, so that is kind of a loss for us. We also may have 20% left over for next year, but we're not sure about that either, so we did include that in our revenue. And the other thing that is different in our, well, that's not revenue, but it's, and it's different expense, so we can see that later. But those are the things I want to point out in our revenue, was there any questions on revenue?
Yeah. You're muted again.
Sorry about that, folks. The, and I'm sorry that I didn't catch this yesterday when I was looking at it. The snow removal.
What line?
Uh, hang on a second, I'm trying to get you to the right pages here. So the, on page, on page 98, the snow removal revenues requested are 922,000. You see that? Can you still hear me, or do you lose me?
We hear you.
Okay. So on, on page 98, the 922,000 dollars in revenue, if you flip.
Sorry, everyone, but welcome back, you gotta restart there, Al.
On page 98, the snow removal revenues are 922,000.
That's right. Did you want it to be something different?
Um, and then when you flip to the snow removal totals.
Total.
And we on page one, page 105, the expense total is 948,663.
Yep.
Those two should match up.
Those two numbers, they should be the same. So you can bump that 922 up to 948.
948,663.
I think it's something that balances, I mean, that balances the deadline.
It'll give you a little bit extra revenue, so we can put that on your paving.
You can either, you can either leave the appropriated fund balance alone, or you can increase the paving.
Why am I gonna argue that? Thanks, Al.
26, 26,663, if I did it right.
Yep.
Sorry about that, guys.
That's perfect.
At least it went the right way.
For a change.
So if you say on page 98, that's where the expenses start, um, the reason for the .1 regular earnings going up is that we moved a Highway 1 worker here with Matt in the sign shop. I don't think there's anything interesting left in there, unless anybody has any questions about the sign shop, the 3310. Next is County Road Admin.
Hey Deb, can I just have a request? Or maybe Brian, next year, if 3310, if there'd be a little note that says this is sign shop or something? Because it's just under County Road, you, I, you wouldn't know that if Deb didn't say it.
Yep.
Yeah, is that something Al has to change in the program to say sign shop instead of County Road?
Well, no, just say County Road dash, sign shop.
Sign shop, yeah.
But I mean, it's not something I can do.
Right, I think we can maybe pull that off, maybe before the tentative budget even.
We can make that happen today, Brian.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks. Uh, so that is sign shop, the admin, there's not much different in admin, was there any questions for that? Engineering, we go to County Road Engineering, not many changes to that either.
Where, where are you, Debbie?
I am, um.
99, 100 and 100.
Yeah, 100.
Page 100.
The engineering department is at the bottom of 100 and the top of 101.
It's 50-20.
Thank you.
Next is County Road Maintenance.
Well, I, we could just take a second, 'cause I remember there's, I mean, the expense is going from budgeted 269 to 346. I'm just trying to decipher where the changes are there before we go too far, if you don't mind. Oh, it's Benny, never mind.
Yeah, I see him, I just, yep.
I'll catch up by next week.
One of the things that changes stuff between, well, this is, okay, so that doesn't change that, but it might change something later on, then we'll talk about. So County Road Maintenance is next. And this is where those numbers will change sometimes, because what we do is, we figure out our road project, our bridge project, and our maintenance project. And then if, like, if we're really heavy on road projects, those numbers are gonna be higher than the .1 than maintenance or bridges. And, so that's why those numbers change all the time. They're not constantly, um, certain set amounts for anyone's purchase, because it fluctuates every year what we have to work in. So in County Maintenance, is there any questions on that one?
Yes.
What's that?
Go ahead, Dana.
On page 101, County Maintenance, you have a highlighted note, this includes COVID for county and state snow. You anticipate COVID, you anticipate we're gonna get COVID expenses and revenue in 2021?
No, um, I think that that actual amount includes COVID for county, state, and snow. If that note goes to the 2020 actual, which is 1,116,0227, but our budget, see, that's the interesting thing about the notes that come out, you don't know which column those notes are referenced.
Okay, so that's for 2020 actual, that was a good question, Dana.
That is a note for 2020 actual, not for our actual budget.
Thank you.
So we do not anticipate any COVID.
We're gonna plow right off the road.
We didn't, we didn't factor COVID in for anything, we didn't do 20, 20, I think I put that in the email, we didn't do 2020 numbers. It just wouldn't request anything properly hopefully for 2021.
Matt.
Who are the employees that are under .1s in County Road Maintenance?
Yeah, so that's what I was gonna step in and try to clarify, Deb was trying to explain that earlier. Unlike most other departments, Deb does not have assigned employees, so she doesn't sign shop, okay? But when it comes down to bridge department, road project department, maintenance department, basically it's her whole workforce. Where their time gets charged is based on what they're doing. If they're doing maintenance, their .1 is charged to that department. If they're doing a road project, it's charged to the road project department.
Okay.
So it changes, it's not necessarily that Fred and Joe live in the maintenance department, it's that Fred and Joe were doing maintenance today, but they might be on the road project tomorrow.
Right, can I interject just a little here, it might help? On our town budgets, we have brush and weeds, we have snow removal, we have all, it's the same idea here.
Can I assume that in the budget, a person may fluctuate between those three overall?
Yes.
Those three would be approximately 2% higher than last year, as opposed to them all being 5% higher, because if this one's up quite a bit, that should make the other, one of the other ones go down a little bit.
Right.
So what we do.
Can I add to that?
To be just like your town budget, same idea.
What we do is we take all of our workers, and we spread them out, and try to put them where we think it's gonna work for that. But we may have to move money around in the end.
I get that, but it shouldn't be consistent from a budgeting standpoint, year to year, 'cause you don't know year to year.
Well, we know how many bridge projects there are compared to road projects, so that's why it fluctuates. So remember the one year we did all those bridges, there was more on bridge, now it's, you know, we've taken away paving, so.
So like, if you move, the side guy to the side shop, that .1 went up, there should be a corresponding .1 reduction in one of those other three areas.
Well, you're right, if you add up all the .1s, if you add up.
You bring me to philosophizing, I wanna make sure you're, it was numerically.
Yes, if you move all the .1s together and add them up, they should be 2.5% higher than the .1s collectively were last year.
Could I, kind of, you can check on that?
Yes.
If you want, I can send you our .1 calculations. And, so there, as a person.
He owns the document, he needs to make sure that. 'Cause if it's out, I'm gonna come catch up.
So it's 2.5%, but would, would they be steps?
Well, there's gonna, well, right, and there's, well, not like that, there's keeps us contracts, so I don't know these jack numbers.
That is all in our, it's all in the sheet that we figured out.
Yeah.
I just wanted to correct the mixture, right?
Let's just spend a lot of time on that sheet.
Yeah, it works, it works pretty much like our town does, where you put it in all the different categories, but they all add up to what they actually get paid.
Yeah, I just can't put pages fast enough ahead of my head to make sure that that's.
Yeah, oh, you're right.
But I'm telling you which is a mistake, I guess.
I understand that too.
Matt, the only column here that is real is the 2019 actual, so if you, if you, so if you compare it to that, it's actually less.
Any more questions on maintenance? So we can go to County Road Project, which is, uh, the 102 and 103. So we're proposing, what we did was, we took the chips money, and we tailored our road projects to add up to that, and our chips money is actually a little less than that, so that safe no error is gonna help us in that. But it proposes 10.61 miles for road projects for next year. And then on the County Bridge Project.
Sorry, I'll just get that here, I just don't get the numbers in the head. Why would our contractual total go from 100 to a million to 667, and we budget zero next year?
What line is this? Is this a .1 to go?
No, 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 this is towards the bottom, see where it's highlighted, evolution contract amount, and just below that contractual totals? In 18, it was 100,000, in 19, it was almost a million. We amended the budget to 667 this year, we haven't spent any yet, and then we have it zero next year. I just don't understand the contractual totals.
So those are your, um, those are the ones that we just changed and created a separate capital project for? They're her federal Highway 8 eligible small marginal project. So, that's why they fluctuate so much, 'cause they're only in a year, and we almost always put them in the budget via amendment, because of when the tip, when we get notified.
Okay.
Um, so our County Bridge Project, uh, the two that we deferred from this year to next year, those are replaceable structures. Um, now we have three tubes that we're putting in, similar to what we did last year, and one repair.
Brian, let me step back for a second. I had that. 10.61 miles of road, what do we, what was our figure that we came up with a couple, two or three years ago? About how many miles of roads we needed to stay even before you said.
My favorite conversation, miles of roads.
Well, and I understand different projects and all that, but we had a.
Wasn't it 23 to 27 or something like that?
How many?
Yeah.
23 to 27.
Yeah, I thought it was an excess of 1. It's just for, you know, okay, so we're, we're halfway there, that's just as better as last year.
I'd be happy if we could do a lot more.
Yeah, I think we're all worth it, but it's not, uh. Dana?
How, how many miles are we gonna do this year?
Okay.
You mean the current year right now?
This year.
Okay.
Yep.
That's one that's.
So right now, we have paid 10.9 miles, and we're hoping to do 1.71 miles. Extreme ambition for others cooperating, and we hope to at least cap part of 1.11. Have one of the roads not scheduled, for the two years that completely come apart this winter, it's, um, roads that go.
49?
No, we have 106, but what is the?
Two is landing.
Two is landing.
Dana?
The 26,600 earlier that Al mentioned, that would go on page 103, in the middle, road projects, that gets added to that 1.9 million?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, now which number is, are we using for the budget? That, the handout that Deb gave us, that shows 10.6 miles at 1,973,000? Or the one in the budget, 1 billion? So which one does the $26,000 get added to, this, this paper or the budget?
Well, if it gets added to the budget, then I will add roads to that paper.
Okay, but your paper does not jive with the budget, they're, the math, they're off by $11,000 or something.
Right, because I can't get it to the penny, I mean, I can cut off maybe a tenth of a mile or something, but we're, we're trying to get the best plan that we can for this.
Okay, let me, let me ask my question differently. In the budget, on page 103, road projects, it says 1,962,502. In the budget, on page 103, road projects, it says 1,962,502.
That's the number we'll add to, right? That, the 26.
Well, I was hoping you would bring that up to 1,973,169.
We're gonna do better. We're gonna be at 1,962 and add the 26 to it, and you'll be above that number.
Right.
Deb wants, Deb wants to add the 26,000 to this sheet.
If, if we had that, we'd do it, but we don't have that, so we're gonna add it to the budget.
Okay.
Well, if you add to the budget, then the sheet is gonna get changed.
Right.
Well, the sheet's different than the budget anyway.
That's right.
Okay.
Either way, either way, it's getting changed, but you're right, Dana.
All right, so I'm gonna add 26,000 to the 1,962 that's in the budget.
Yes. That'll be 1,989,102, if I'm right.
1.988,502.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dave, do you have a question?
Oh, my question is Bob's question. In two years, we're gonna be 2020, 2021, basically, what we've done, we're gonna be one year behind you, or two every year. Call back to Dave's way. Just caught up, almost caught up, so no, go back to, backwards again.
Yep. It's called priorities. Co-priorities. You have to change according to the situation you're in, and that's what we had to do before. We nearly got back, and we had to change the priority again. Not to my liking either, but it's the situation we're at.
If we get TCRs or extreme recovery, especially when that, you know, it'll help.
Yes.
And they're always fighting for those monies coming in, just doesn't seem to fit the plan. It's very, probably wasn't before, so.
Not to fight to the finish every year.
Well, I mean, these are gonna be for reclamation of the whole project.
We didn't do any after. We couldn't afford to. We took it out of some of our projects for this year. And then county bridge projects, any questions on that one either? Um, page 104 has where you start snow removal. That's where we remove snow. So any other questions in county roads? So we go to county machinery, on page 106.
Everybody's favorite.
No, I have some in those. Um, any questions on revenue for county road machinery? If we go over to 108, let's see. Yep, 108 lists out our equipment purchases that we would like to do. So we saw in the sheet where we started out with two standard trucks and two automatic trucks. Uh, we had to cut to meet the recommendations, so we moved those two automatics back to standard. Um, one thing that we did wrong from the very beginning was we only put three Joma blades in there. Those are the blades that hold the blades on the plows. So we need to, we need to figure out how we're gonna do another $4,000 for the Joma blade. Uh, we wanted to get a loader with a sweeper, but we, um, took the sweeper off. And then we wanted to get a roadside mower, but we had to mix that as well. Keeping, getting four trucks keeps with our plan. Our replacement plan is going really well so far. Um, the loader that we were, are looking to replace is a 1997 John Deere. Uh, it was purchased for 58,345 dollars. It's 23 years old. Repairs to date are a little over 70,000, so it held up pretty well. We cut this line to 14,000, did not get the sweeper. And as far as the roadside mower goes, we have three roadside mowers. Two of them are 2008, one is a 2012. Um, the one that we wanna replace is one of the 2008. We purchased that for 32,133, and the repair costs are to date almost 94,000. So that one's really, you know. Oh, but we don't have the, so like, that's the story.
Things we're looking for money for is what you're telling us.
Yes. Um, and then the other big line in that fund is the miscellaneous life tools and equipment. So I believe this is anything over $2,000, but it's not, it's not on, on equipment. It's not a vehicle, a vehicle. So we put in there steam jenny. We're trying to get the steam jenny. We're doing, we're gonna, we're gonna truck wash. And two weeks of the spring, completely cleaning all the saw off them, and I think it's done well for their longevity. So we wanna keep that program going, so we put one steam jenny in there. And we need a compressor for one of our barns. What we took out was a patch roller, candy little roller that we use all the time. But we took out the mulch shed for the wheeled excavator. That is something that would save a lot of, um, money in ours. And it, it clears trees and spews up to a certain diameter, so it's pretty useful. But we looked into renting it, and we couldn't do that. But we, we don't have enough money in that line up to buy one. One thing that we would really, really get love to get is a hot pack, hot box patch machine. Um, some of you guys went in together on it, and we think you're pretty happy with it. We would like to get one of those. And then, uh, brine sprayers for the south part of the county, we took those out as well. That, that line.
I have a question on salt, salt sprayer, brine sprayers?
Go ahead, Dana.
We had a lot of discussion on this. The trucks are all equipped with saddle tanks to spray brine. Where were you gonna have standalone sprayers that are not already attached to the trucks? Are you gonna, do we have some trucks that we don't have it on?
So I've not really explained this really clearly, obviously, because there's two different types of brine. There's pre-treating and pre-wetting. I hope I'm getting the words right. So pre-treating is when you go out a day or sometimes two days, depending on this big, long list of criteria that you have to meet, and you spray brine on the road and it dries. So that way, when the snow starts, it gives you, um, a leave time to get your plows out and it starts melting the snow. The other brine that we use, that you're talking about, that is on the trucks, that's where it sprays the salt as it comes out of the truck, the spinner, and it pre-wets it. And when it pre-wets it, it does two things. It activates it quicker because it's got water on it, and it prevents the bouncing scatters so that it doesn't end up over on the shoulder of the road.
But, but the pre-treat is a trailer model? That's what you scratched here, where the trailers?
Yep, it's, yep, that, that's, both are, that is, we're still doing, we've outfitted all the barns with brine storage tanks. And any truck that has a sprayer on it to spray while it is applying salt to the road and plowing is offset. This is just for pre-treating.
Okay.
And they go on the back of the pickup. Yep. So, Dan, anything else?
Long as we're still on brine. Deb, you said you're applying for a grant from the Lake Champlain, Lake George Regional Planning Board for a, um, a brine mixer. I thought we've purchased one for every barn already. Or I mean, we're gonna have a tra, a traveling, a traveling brine mixer.
We are using, um, Warren County. That's what we, that's what we went in with Warren County, and Warren County got it. They got the grant that we wanted to get, and, um, they allowed us to use theirs.
Okay, so this would, this, if we get the grant, this would allow us to have our own?
Yes.
And that's gonna travel from barn to barn?
Yes, yep. And the reason that we really are interested in getting our own is the fact that, um, like your town, there's a few other towns that are extremely interested in getting into brine. And if we have our own, we can make brines for the towns as well.
Thank you.
I think that's it for me.
Any other questions for Deb? Total silence.
You must have done a good job. No question. It was very good, um, yeah, and I, well, we, our-
What we got?
Our inter-fund transfer, I believe, was nine and a half million, right? That's one thing I didn't, I didn't cover yet, but that's, um, it's down from the 10 and a half, but we were close to, we weren't quite to 10 and a half last year, but, uh.
So be on, uh, page 90. What the budget officer was just saying to me is, uh, we should cover this. So page 90, top third of the page, uh, under the department 9,000 inter-fund transfers, second one down, is inter-fund transfer to county road. Um, you'll see that the adopted budget for 2020 was 10.9 million. Uh, what's currently in there is 9.428906 for next year. Um, and that was, again, as Deb kinda highlighted, those were some of the parameters that the budget officer gave to Deb at the beginning of this, and kudos to her and her staff in cutting down the requests, um, to meet those parameters. And, you know, now she's kind of highlighted what she would like to do if we were able to find more money.
Yeah, 'cause if we could get back to what the amended number is, it would almost take care of most of those things. So that's what we're, that's where our challenge is at the moment in highway.
Um, one other thing that we wanted to talk about was, it's the church street property. So, um, we're receptive to inter-hick proposal to subsidize, but I just would like a little more time to find out if we need to keep that plan or if we need to just get a permit on it, or what is the best, the best way to approach it for the county? Because we don't wanna own land that we, we don't need.
Well, so you, it might be a-
We might not need to subsidize it.
When you're all done, sell the whole thing.
Just have, just have an easement for where you need it.
And just have an easement to say if you ever need to put something like a bridge?
Yep.
Oh.
So that's what, we wanted to look at all our options, and we haven't seen enough time to figure out what they are for that.
I'm wondering.
But the other thing is, in talking to Deb, we're probably looking at the end of 2022 as an optimistic end for that project, so we've got some time.
I thought we were talking about June 2021.
Hang on.
No, we're, I mean-
Who knows?
Scheduled to go to bid in December of this year. We're scheduling to construct a project next year. Doing anything on time in this, uh, matter of course, you try.
There's just a lady in the state there, she was pretty dependent on what was gonna happen, but that's fine. Whatever works out, works out.
Oh, she wasn't in the state, she's in the home.
Oh, she's a consultant?
And she tried to leave something, but she's, um, we don't want to hear.
The lady from the state is the one you're talking to, the free she keep from?
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was the woman. That's, that's why she said that, but we are ambitiously trying to move this forward.
So Chris, if, if we had an easement on that property on the other side that's unbuildable, could that be sold to the neighboring properties then, too, that so we wouldn't, and that helps?
So, yeah, in, in theory, we are, we as the county big C are receptive to divesting ourselves of every piece of land that we can. We just need to do our due diligence with the consulting engineer to make sure that we're not hamstringing ourselves for the future. So whether if we retain a slice in ownership or we just put an easement on it, yeah, we're totally on-
Is there any other business to come before the DPW, Dana?
Yes. I'm sorry I didn't ask this when we were into county road machinery, but if Deb could go to page 108?
Shoes closed. Go ahead.
And if you go down to the bottom, supplies, other, $490,000? And then the handout that Deb emailed us, it shows $60,000 for snowplow shoes? Do you do that? Is that every year, $60,000 for shoes? I don't know how much snowplow shoes are, but that seems like a, a lot of money.
Well, we have 26 trucks, um, but I know they don't have to be replaced every year. So I can, I didn't bring the sheet that have last year's on it.
See, the handout that you sent us, I'm just wondering if that's like the same every year? You put 60,000, 60,000, 60,000?
It was, it was 60,000 last year.
Well, I would, my constituents would say that we could probably save money on that when they tell me at night the county plow went by and there's no snow and there's smart, sparks flying off the shoes? Do we have a stockpile of shoes somewhere?
I don't think they-
Not till we buy them.
They have metal shoes, so I don't know why they would be marked.
Because we've got those new blades, that, right, that conform to the road. Do they have shoes on those new blades?
Those are covered with rubber.
Right, but what he's saying is those rubber blades, do they need shoes when you use them? That's what he's asking.
That's a Joma blade system. There's this piece that holds on to the plow, and then there's these blades that hold on to that.
But does the plow also have sheets?
So his question is, is your shoe involved with that?
I guess I don't know what the shoe part is.
One part behind it.
Yeah, usually behind it to keep it from digging in.
Well, no, these are for those, the rubber moving things. These are not for the, the- Do we even have those on anymore? I don't know. I'll have to find out, Dana.
See, if, if you're not using shoes anymore, we shouldn't be spending $60,000 on shoes.
Well, I can assure you, we're not buying something that we don't need to buy.
It's in your budget.
So we must be buying something that we need to buy, and I don't know what it is, so I was finding out for you.
Well, maybe that 60,000 for shoes could go towards more Joma blades. Not, not the Joma blade. The Joma is the blade behind the rubber blades. But buy more rubber blades. I just didn't know that, I didn't know if that's kind of an ob- I just didn't know that, I didn't know if that's kind of an obsolete line item now, 60,000 for shoes if you're not even using shoes?
All right, so the plows have two shoes and the wings have three.
There you go. Buy shoes and...
I need trucks.
Do we replace those shoes every year?
Probably don't have to. But 60 wouldn't do more anyway. You're just changing them when they, when they're worn out, and you go through 60 a year. That's all I'm saying.
I'm sure they're not $1,000 a shoe.
I can get you all the past years of what we spent on that, if you want.
All right, thank you.
Is there anything else before we adjourn?
Jay, Darryl Wilson, can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, one thing to bring up for the local corps committee. As you know, there's a company called Champlain Hudson Power Express. They're due to bring a DC-powered cable from Canada to New York City, service New York City power needs. That project, uh, we've been kind of waiting for the timeline on that. We think we know a little bit more about it. Uh, I've got some documents that I can share with people. Uh, what's important there is, uh, one, the Canadian government hasn't granted approval yet. However, the company went in front of New York State and requested approval for little pieces of the project to begin ahead of, ahead of Canadian government approval so that they could set the conditions for rapidly laying the cable, most of which in our area is going down Lake Champlain, but it's coming out of the lake now in Putnam. So, um, they're looking at beginning that work as early as second quarter of next year. And, uh, one of those pieces is just simply the entry and exit out of the lake. There's some conduit, if you will, they'll put in, in place with horizontal drilling. And, uh, so they could begin as early as second quarter of next year. The reason why I'm bringing this up is, uh, as you know, they're coming down the roads. Uh, it's part of their plan, uh, and I think it's gonna touch quite a few towns in the county. Uh, we did reach out about a year and a half ago to one person, Ellen Smith, who lives in Putnam. Uh, she is, uh, got her own consulting firm right now. She retired as COO of, um, National Grid. Before that, she was with General Electric. So, it's kind of her business. She's offered to help represent us in negotiating our interests. But I think at some point in time, we need to get together collectively with the townships. I don't think any town has really entered into an agreement yet with Champlain Hudson Power Express. But the time is coming soon where we, we are going to need to do that. And, uh, I just want to put that forth. One, I think we have a more than capable representative for us. She's willing to do it for, uh, gratis, for free. And we need to come up with a position, uh, both at the county and our, in each of our townships who are impacted by this. Uh, and we probably need to start moving on that sooner as opposed to later. That's all.
Jay, I got a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Dana.
Yeah, when they had come to Kingsbury, Darryl, I was under the impression they were gonna negotiate all those arrangements with the IDA in Warren, Washington County.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything back on exactly who they're talking to in those organizations. And I'm not sure what the, to your point, I'm not sure what the process is right now, what those steps are. I, I do have the, the point of contact that, that it's reached out to us, uh, from the company, and, um, we call him and ask what their, uh, what their going-forward methodology is gonna be when it comes to Washington County.
Dave?
So, uh, actually, last week, a representative from, uh, from the transmission group reached out to us for preliminary discussion.
Tell us a lot of this.
The IDA. They were gonna, they were gonna send us some more information out. So, that was the first we heard from them. I do understand that there's 47 miles in Washington County that they're coming through. That's approximately 13% of the entire project. I think the entire project is 330 miles. Uh, so, that, that was the first we heard directly from them, so I'm not sure where they're going, what they're looking for. Uh, we just might have initial conversations, so if that's as much as we got, we should be hearing more within the next two to three weeks, who's gonna send some, some more information to us. So, when I get that, I will share that.
When they originally came to us, they told us about what they were gonna do to our assessments. They didn't tell us they were coming for a pilot. Is that different than it's been?
I had not heard they're gonna reach out for a pilot until this conversation last week.
Yeah.
The way I understood it, they give us figures. But, uh, roundabout way, I heard those figures were, uh, an assumption they were gonna get a pilot. And I was, I wasn't too in favor of that. We also got to include the village too, because they're going through the Village of Whitehall also.
Right, as I said, it's the first reach out we've had. I saw Dana, and I'll repeat some of my comments, Dana, is that that was the first we heard from them. Um, they are supposed to be providing more information. What I understand is that, uh, in Washington County, you're going 47 miles through the, through the lake and through the, by the railroad, all the way down through there. So, um, it looks like that this is the, this is about 13 or 14% of the entire project going to Washington County, the largest county it's going through, and I think you're right, it's gonna be six towns. Dresden, Putnam, Whitehall, Fortin, Hartford, Kingsbury, whatever.
Was it, was there a piece of Hartford, even a little section?
Yes.
Yeah?
So...
The most important part. I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put a toll there.
Did you hear that, Dana?
I did, thanks, Dave.
Yeah?
Hey, I don't know, I got a question for you. Um, Verizon has the special franchise type thing. Is this the, the same type of situation, or am I wrong on that?
You're, you're asking the wrong guy. That's, that's...
But don't they, they have the special franchise that comes in, right? Isn't that usually where they have their little setups around the county?
That's Time Warner, that's Time Warner, Brian.
Time Warner does.
Well, I think Verizon is in, is in Hebron, and I think that's, they have a special thing they get on their, um, assessment. And I think they're after probably the same type thing, and so I don't know, I don't know which way we should be attacking this. I thought from what General Bell just said, they gave us numbers to begin with. I didn't realize there was an assumption that there would be a pilot with that. That was, so it's very interesting. I guess we're gonna hear from Dave's group.
Yeah.
I did not hear that from the company, but I heard that from another source.
Yeah, we might have lost audio again out of the room. Lost audio in the main room. Yeah, John, so I, I called... John Rozell, I called Ellen last night and talked to her. I don't know if they can hear us in the main room, but she was gonna come up with what we thought, or what she thinks is a reasonable estimated value associated with the project so that we could have some understanding of what actual tax value versus pilot would do for us. We could do a comparison.
Oh, go ahead. Welcome back for the fourth time, everyone. I'm ready to adjourn unless anybody says something else.
Before we lose you again. Dana?
Several years ago, um, the power people came and spoke to us. And of course, in the beginning, the, the numbers on the revenue were very high, and we were all like, oh, that, wow, that would be wonderful. Never, never was expressed a desire for pilot. So, it's, you know, like everything else. My concern is if it's a, if it's a pilot, that money, that little piece in Hartford, that money needs to come to the town of Hartford, not stay in the IDA.
Well, that's what a pilot does, right?
Yeah, but, well, but you remember, a lot of towns are on that 1999 list, so you gotta confer with a lot of towns first.
Yeah.
So, we've come up with this. The property they were gonna use here in Whitehall was assessed a lot more than the figures that they had given us. So, Darryl, I, I agree with having that representative go through and compare the numbers. That'd be very helpful.
Yeah.
All right, well, I, I, again, I talked to Ellen last night. She was gonna pull some of her resources and figure out what, uh, project, similar projects of nature, the, the value of that would be. Gotta have a comparison to start with, otherwise, we don't know what's best for the county. Obviously, the company's gonna go for a pilot. That makes it easier for them.
Right?
Darryl, you'll keep us updated? Yeah, Brian, Darryl, you'll keep us updated on her findings?
Yeah, I will. We've, we've got a lot of work to do yet, so, um, we'll, uh, we'll go from there. I'll, I'll send out some information, everybody, and we'll, we'll start the conversation after that. But I don't know...
Yeah, and I, I would be an hope, Darryl, that she would be available to the IDA as we're in this discussion?
Oh, most certainly, and I'm, I'm sure...
Very good.
She's been working from home. Her, her normal office, just so you know, is out of Boston, but she's been working from home all summer, which is in Gold Bay in Putnam. So, um, I'll probably be meeting her this weekend to go over some things.
Greatly appreciated, thank you. Okay, finance is now adjourned.
DPW is adjourned, thank you, everybody.
We'll see you all, public safety and...